Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back to the Clayton County Library Board of Trustees Meeting. My name is Duane Fabian, I'm the Chair of the Board, and at this time I call this meeting in order. We will go to our next item on the agenda, we have a moment of silent prayer, so let's bow heads and suns. Okay, Madam Trustee Shaw, can you call the board please?
Duane Fabian.
Present.
Herman Andrews. Shenice Williams, present. Salima Abdullah.
Present.
Shepard Isaac. Sherri Gates.
Present.
Brenda Gutierrez.
Present.
Trina Cole.
Present.
Quinn Lee.
Present.
And Ebony Brown.
Okay, Madam Shaw, do we have a four or six?
Yes.
All right, moving right on, next item on the agenda will be the approval of the agenda. I have a motion, please.
I'll interpret with my best, ready?
And it's been properly moved by trustee Abdullah, is there a second?
I saw it.
Who's that? It's been seconded by trustee Gutierrez, are there any questions? Here and now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposedes? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda will be approval of the amendments for July 8th through 25th. I have a motion, please.
I know.
Yes, as well, I have a motion, and it was moved by trustee Lee, is there a second?
Question?
Yes.
On the bottom of the first page, where it's highlighted, it says, "Last sentence additionally, the brain fuse that now should be brain fuse vet as in vet."
Yeah, okay. With the correction being made from that to that now, it's been properly moved, seconded by trustee Abdullah, are there any questions? Here and now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposedes? Any abstentions? Motion passes. All right, next item on the agenda, Madam trustee Shaw, do we have any in common, public comments? Did it all sound good?
No.
All right. All right, next item on the agenda will be our official report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good morning. As always, good scene, good scene. My name is Scott Parr, and I'm the Dean of Clayton County Library Assistant, for those that are too new on the line. As is customary, I always begin the board meetings by giving kudos to my staff, Clayton County Library Assistant, they do a fantastic job day in and day out, and again, we wouldn't be able to do the wonderful things without their help and support. And, kudos to this board, without your help and support, a lot of the things we wouldn't be able to accomplish, so thank you all as well. So I have a few updates that I would like to share for the month of July. On July 7th, many of you were in the house when we had our cookout with the library over in Northwest, so a little spin on from our copy of the library, but we had the Director for GLS, it's Kristen White, who is the Director for the Department, Jordan Department for the Line and Print Disabled, which is a statewide network based out of the state library, and had wonderful sessions speaking with her, getting to know about accessibility equipment, accessibility services that are available to our community, and we had a very robust discussion at the end, and a lot of folks in the house that day, so it was very nice to have. And I think we also had several of our members become ambassadors for GLS, so we were very excited about that. On July 19th, there was a back-to-school showcase at the South Lake Mall, and we were represented along with the other Clayton County departments, they gave out school supplies, I think, I've heard several different totals, but I think there were more than 800 bookbags that were given out, we interacted with probably close to 3,000 people, it was a good day, it was a very good day. We had tables set up, and we gave out literature, we gave out a few little swag items, and I think we ran out of everything well before the end of the day, so that's how we're in a mode of today. You may have heard mentioned, a couple of months ago or a few meetings back, that we were looking at establishing a partnership with senior services to where, along with Meals on Wheels program, we are also offering library services to that same group of residents. So when Meals on Wheels go out to deliver food, they will go, we will have library items with them, and so we have worked with them to get a list of requested items that they would like, whether they're books, whether they're puzzles, whether they're DVDs, and so Ms. Kim Jones over there has spirited that and did our first round.
Yes.
And any comments on how that went?
Most of them enjoyed the South Lake Mall today, because we were very specific about what we put in their bags, we came out and did a personal survey with each person, parts in a handy bag, so they requested to submit things. The biggest thing they all wanted was memory kits, so every last person received a memory kit, and we had supplies in order to melt out.
Very nice. So the next thing I would like to quickly mention, who was able to attend our retreat? We did beautiful last. Chair, this case, do you remember seeing the Sound Group pods?
Yes.
So I was very impressed with the Sound Group pods, and there we have one. And so we have one here at Headquarters, it's in the open area, it is able to be reserved like a study room or a meeting room, and I think 30 minutes sessions, up to an hour a day.
Yes.
We want to have as many people use it as possible, so we debated back and forth how long we should make these reservation period last, but again, I think it's an hour per patron per day. Again, it's new, it's being used, folks are excited about it, and hopefully we can get some money in the next couple of years to buy some more. I think, not only are they cool, but they're needed, you know, when you have to step away real quick to make a quick call call, or you need to take that Zoom call, or that virtual meeting real quick, you can reserve that and take care of your business, so very excited to have that.
Yeah, I would love one in my house.
I can imagine. A couple more items here. Under the board report, toward the last page, you have technology and computer updates, and I do want to share that we recently purchased what's called an electronic recording tool through an organization or company called Orange Board, and what this will allow us to do is, whenever there's an incident, one of the branches or a hearing at Headquarters, we generally have a paper document where the staff are writing their perception of what happened, or the incident as was reported to them, or anything they saw, but a lot of times, there is, it is subjective, not necessarily objective. This recording tool helps to eliminate that, it also helps to eliminate some bias, and it helps streamline deficiencies, so we can have an archive of it, we can pull up past reports if need be, so we're very excited about having this tool. We just recently got the notice to proceed, and Deputy Director Stanley will be receiving the initial training before we roll it out to the branches and system line, so we're excited about that. We do have a couple of MOUs, memorandums of understanding that I wanted to share, they haven't come up to the board yet, but they will be coming soon. The first one is a partnership with PR and associates, and that is to plan and host educational and information sessions on topics including real estate, education, property tax awareness, aging community awareness, financial literacy, travel, et cetera. So the MOU will be in effect through January of next year, and it will remain in the next one calendar year. The other one is WETA, WETA, which is a grant that we received, and it has to do with the American Revolution, and the purpose of this grant is to provide activities that will include curated book displays, a teen art contest, temporary historical exhibits, a children's puppet show, and a podcast episode exploring underrepresented revolutionary voices, and this initiative aims to foster customer engagement, fostering historical literacy and civic dialogue across the community. So those two will be coming to board the VOC, probably at the next meeting on the 19th. I do want to, I saw that in the meeting minutes from last week, I did want to share, again, I guess I'll say, everyone is aware that we were the recipients of the Community Development Lock Grant, 230,000. It's already spent. But we're also looking at applying for an additional $10,000 grant through Delta Community Credit Union, they have a full profit in the award grant, so we're developing a proposal now, that proposal will be geared around helping to teach life skills to young folks to get them ready for adulthood, and we have a preliminary title of the program as Ready Set Adult, and so we will be teaching classes like, for young men, how to tie a tie, for young ladies, how to put makeup on appropriately, basic auto repairs, how do you change the oil, how do you check your oil, what's some other things, Ken, that we're talking about?
Car maintenance, basic home maintenance, how to clean washing clothes, folding, how to cook, basic meals, basic budgeting, so there's a financial literacy component. We're thinking about partnering, when we're doing the How to Tie a Tie partnering with an organization to give out to students, there'll be some worker force development in there, there's also going to be a literacy component, because a lot of students make it to college if they don't read a book. So we want to do a short book club to help them build their literacy skills, to show them how it's going to help them be able to interpret forms and contracts and leases and things like that if they get old.
Exciting stuff. And since these skill sets that our folks see day in and day out, and I think we would be remiss if we didn't try to do something to address that, so that's just one more area that we are striving to address, and so, those were all the bullet points that I wanted to share, any questions, comments, or concerns about any of those items?
No, I would add, since John Corr has gone away, I think this will be something interesting, and it's going to be beneficial for the citizens, especially hearing the different programs, it will take me back to my younger years of home economics.
Sure.
And a lot of the taught skills has gotten away from that, only of course, over the number of years, and so that's something that we need to get back to, which is great.
Very much so, and as I'm sure you are very well aware, we offer our job fairs on a periodic basis, we partner with the Goodwill of North Georgia, and in preparation for those job fairs, we also at times host a class for job readiness, so how do you dress for success? Resume writing, even doing research before you can get there on companies that best suit your needs, and finding out what your interests are, so a very useful component. Yes, thank you for that. Any other questions, comments?
Okay.
Yes?
Next item on the agenda will be Deputy Director's Report.
Good evening, everyone, how's everyone doing today?
Good evening.
Good morning.
Well, July featured some of the library's most popular programs, from children dancing to adults dancing, to cooking classes for all ages, and so as the summer draws near, we just kind of reflect on being very grateful to be able to service our families in Clayton County. And so let's talk about some of the different programs that we've offered, and so on July 15th, the Headquarters Library hosted its first Accessible Sim and Paint event in collaboration with the Georgia Library Services for the Line and Print Disabled, and that's GLS, and that's also who we, the director interviewed, Director Kristen White of GLS. And so this was led by Chelsea Waters, which is a former Clayton County staff member, and the session featured canvases outlined with hot glue, and so it allowed participants to explore and follow the design through touch, and so she was guiding them, it was just such a positive experience, and it was really great. The summer food program, we want to thank the Cary Hearts Community Development Corporation for providing lunches to our families this summer. We want to be that resource for the community, and we appreciate their help in making that happen. Also, we did want to thank all the performers that performed this summer, education, literacy, but we have to have some fun in there, and so they did such a great job, such engaging performances this summer. As you remember, last Board of Trustees meeting, we had public comments by Ms. Pantee Walker, and she talked about hydroponic gardens, so if you would go out and if you go into the Headquarters main area where you see the library, you would see our hydroponic garden, and it's absolutely amazing, and so stay tuned, because we have two other branches that she's going to be working with to bring those hydroponic gardens, and so we're very excited about that. On July 8th, last Board of Trustees meeting after the meeting, the Clayton County Library System had its chance to host the first drive-in movie, and so that featured the Men in Black International, 38 families got a chance to participate, and it was just really fun, very engaging, and very fun, and so that's great. You can see throughout the summer, we had so many displays, so many readers advisory, because we wanted to make sure that we're here for the community, but we also listen after all of our programs, we have surveys, that you can tell us how you feel, you can tell us if there's something that you would like to see or a part you would like to see. Now, we know that tomorrow, they have a line dancing class, but Northwest had a soul line dancing class, and so that was very fun, and so I thought, you know what, I'm going to have to check them out, so they had a great time, they had 19 participants, and it was just fun, they said, you know, everyone was doing their thing, so we appreciate that. For the summer reading finale, the Georgia Library Services for the Line and Print Disabled Department should let Clayton County Library System host an art and ice pop end of the summer reading event at the Northwest Branch, and so this was absolutely amazing, staff also gave away supplies, and so this was just fun, and they had a great time. Now, clicking with Chef Rita, she was the highlight of a lot of the branches, and so she went over, she went across several of our branches to show everyone how to cook easy and prepare the meals, but guess what, it doesn't have to be hours preparing a meal, you know, nothing, you think, it takes a long time to prepare a meal, but she showed you how to prepare easy and healthy meals, in probably less than 30 minutes, and so she did such a great job, we want to thank Chef Rita for all of her time, her effort, and so that was a big hit. Also, the most popular event at a lot of the branches also was the Enchanted Immersive Zoo, and so over 90 people attended, you know, we love to see our animals, and so they had such a great time, and I do want to give kudos to the partners again, because it takes a lot to get up in front of everyone and perform, and to teach a message, teach a message of education, literacy, and that it is cool to learn, it is, but it's also worth to have fun, and we would like to incorporate it too. We had several outreach events, on July the 12th, Kim Jones and Laura Eby here at the Headquarters Library took part in the Second Chance Outreach, the assistant and individuals who updated their resumes, the Riverdale Branch, Jennifer Lynn and Amanda Corbett, they went to the local summer camps to promote the summer reading program, they highlighted library resources, also had engaging craft sessions with the campers, and that was absolutely amazing. We would like to welcome Raquel Womack, who joined the Riverdale Branch this month, her strong experience, positive reference, and engaging personality made a great impression, so we welcome her to the team, and she has settled in, and she's been doing so well. Any questions?
I'm going to line that, and I'm going to move on to the ground, please.
Well, you have to do some ground, though. But you can check out the soul line dancing class, and so for calendar updates of all programs, please go to the Clayton County website, www.claytonkiel.org, click on the calendar visits, and you can see everything that's going on in each branch.
All right, thank you, Deputy Director Stanley, I'll stick to our next book drop, I'm not feeling better. Are there any questions on the Library Board? We are just starting our Memphisment Year today, and so a lot of the accounts should see that it's being drafted. We are ramping up, so, I don't like to say on that right now, I'm just getting started. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? All right, here and now, we want to ask you to go actually.
I do want to make one more announcement, David.
Please, go ahead.
About two months ago, I was notified by Senator John Ossoff about a grant opportunity, and they encouraged us to submit a proposal dealing with workforce development, small businesses, and/or veteran population, so collaboration with the Library Foundation, we were able to put together a proposal, and about a month ago, we were notified that we had passed the first step, and this is a grant for about $300,000. I'm hearing word that we may have passed the second hurdle, so I think there are about two or three different levels that it needs to go through before we get the final approval, but I did want to make you aware that, again, that's for $300,000.
All right, the next item on the agenda will be Committee Reports, excuse me, Committe- Committing Reports, do you have anyone else speaking about advocate? In one minute.
I love to.
Trustee who?
I always get to go to events, but now I'll be able to come to more things with the library, and I really enjoy though, the barbecue, and our guests, and it was really nice to see the community come out, and she is doing great work, I've been here, it's awesome, and she's operated those additional services for our live operations, and I think that the library continues to do great work, and I'm excited to be more consistent.
Love to have you. Anyone else? Next item on the agenda will be, I think it's been put just to end, I want to go back to the board.
Again, there are, there will be two MOUs that will be presented to the Board Commissioners, again, the first one is PR Associates, and again, two classes with the various topics, financial literacy, aging community awareness, and the other one is the American Revolution Grant, and that's, I think, $750, and again, for displays, talking about underrepresented voices from the revolutionaries, so those are the two.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda will be the ethics disclosure statement, as everyone turn to their phones, to me, also to the VOC, and one, I need, yes, a written.
Yes.
We won't do that. All right, next item on the agenda will be the new business, and that will be trustee Abdullah on the discussion of the business, the revision, unfiled revision.
Good evening, Chair Fabian and Board of Trustees, how's everyone doing today? Great. Trustee woman Abdullah, Chair of the Bylaw Committee, I come before the Board today to present two proposed Bylaw revisions, and everyone should have a copy of Bylaws with two sections that have been highlighted, that would be Section 3 and Section 5, does anyone need a copy? So I'm going to read, as the Bylaws read currently, then I will read our proposed revisions, and then open the floor up for discussion around those revisions, and if no changes are recommended from the Board, then we'll move to a further, okay? All right, so we're going to start in Section 3, Terms of Office, and I'm going to read what it currently states in the Bylaws of ours, Terms of Office. The term of office for each Board Member shall be for three years. A Board Member may serve no more than two consecutive terms eligible for reappointment after sitting out one term. Board Members shall serve staggered terms for continuity of service, a trustee may be subject to removal for loss, for loss of qualification of membership or other good cause. So that's currently how it reads, and we're not suggesting we amend that in any way. What we are recommending is that we add what's highlighted, okay? So what's highlighted reads, if a Board Member is completing the unexpired term of a former member and wishes to be reappointed for a full term, it will be the responsibility of that Board Member to communicate their wishes to the Appointing Commissioner or the entire Board of Commissioners. And through some additional discussion, there was some alternate wording that was suggested, so we need to decide as a Board whether or not we want to go the way it's read, as I just read, or how I'm going to read it, or if we want to make changes, I think everything's something different, okay? So the set, the alternative wording would be, when a Board Member's appointed term is set to expire, it will be their responsibility to communicate their wishes of being reappointed or not to the Clerk of Commission or Appointing Commissioner. This requirement will be for unfulfilled or unfulfilled term and ever in appointments, as well as full-term appointments. So I'll give everyone an opportunity to read both of those highlighted areas, and then once we've taken a moment to read both of those highlighted areas, I'll open up the floor for discussion and any recommendations for changes. I'll give everyone a minute to read both of those sections. Maybe just give me a thumbs up if you're clear, you know, which section you want to go, and you have your preference, or if you need change, five, four, thumbs, five thumbs, six thumbs, okay? And, no cherry is okay? Okay, all right, so, open the floor for discussion.
I like the second paragraph, because it directly says Clerk of Commission or Appointing Commissioner rather than the first. commissioner rather than the first section says the entire board of commissioners. And so that could be a little, that could be a burden on the board member. So I like the second wording there.
I like to keep my, until I sway the facts.
Well, I prefer the first one, the first hypothesis where just in case one board member, if we just email one board member, they may not get it. I guess I don't, because oftentimes when, when I email, you know, I like to see a response, you know, received. So don't get that all the time. I feel more comfortable knowing that if I email all the board members, at least I can know that, you know, all of them received it because all of them will be voting for that.
I have a question for clarification. So would it be the clerk of commission's responsibility to communicate that to all the board members? Would it be the clerk of commission's responsibility to communicate that to all of the commissioners? So we can't govern what the board of commissioners, the clerk does. Or the clerk, because we can't govern their behavior. We can only speak on what it is that we do. So I think that is why we're saying you can do both. You can do either or, right? So their earnest would be on us to communicate our desires. And I hear what you're saying with regards to the second one in the language about when a board member's appointed term is set to expire, it will be their responsibility to communicate their wishes to be reappointed. And the first one, it says if a board member is completing an unexpired term of a former member. So it only speaks to an unexpired term, but as the second one speaks to any term, whether it's unexpired or it's your full term. Your full term has come to an end and you desire to be reappointed to a second term, it would be your responsibility to communicate it. And I think that was the reason for the language of the second. So I hear what Isha Andrews is saying with regards to communicating to everyone, right? Because I agree with him as well in terms of you're just communicating, right? And that could be by email. It doesn't necessarily have to be a face-to-face or a phone call. It's simply in writing, communicating to the commission, board of commissioners or the commissioner that is responsible for, amongst you, of your desire to be reappointed. So there's some, we could marry the language there and take what both of you were saying and make that our statement if that's the will of the board or to be the one. So I'm here about.
Well, I think my assumption was that the clerk, by communicating it to the clerk of commission, they would communicate it to all of the commissioners, but that's probably not the case. So then is it relevant to even communicate at all to the clerk of commission? If they might not communicate it to anyone?
You need to sit up. When a board member returns is up for reappointment, I normally start as the chair communicating with that particular commissioner at least six months out. And if not six months out, at least ninety days out, to let them know that this particular trustee's term is coming to conclusion, coming to an end and if he wishes to be reappointed. Now, of course, this is coming from one person. Now, with this being played, it's followed by a second email from the board member itself. So if my email's not answered, hopefully your email will be answered. If your email's not answered, hopefully my email will be answered. If I sent that for your question.
I think that's a great process and I agree with that, more than one person communicating.
I guess I'm, you don't have to, you don't have to share with, I think it's a board in there, right? It doesn't say and, what does it say and? Does the language say and or?
It says or.
Brother, I'm just trying to find, see the significance of it. The relevance of it being there. And that's a discussion. We can take it out. I don't think it hurts the, for me as a communicator, it doesn't hurt to over-communicate in my estimation if it's the desire of the trustee not to communicate it to, I don't think the bylaws say you have to. So I don't think that it hurts them necessarily having it there because if you don't feel the importance in doing so, then you don't have to, if that makes sense. But.
Can I ask a little dirt? When we do have questions or concerns about board trustees, term, whatnot, our go-to person is the clerk. That's who we communicate with because they usually have records of everyone's term, when it expires. So I do think that there is value in including her on any correspondence along with the commissioners. I think it would just be good practice to do that.
Okay, no, that's the clarification, thank you. I love that. Thank you for jumping in. Thank you for jumping in with that. Because I was trying to say that, but I couldn't find the words. Okay, so we have those two things. Where, where, where are we? Any discussion over here? What are your thoughts? What are you thinking?
The second wording is good.
The second wording.
I have figured that out. Because it includes every board member.
I agree with Drew that went towards the direction of the entire board of commissioners rather than the single appointing board of the board.
Oh, commissioner. Okay, so what I'm hearing is almost a marriage of the two, right? But if we take the alternative wording and we get to more appointing commissioner, we say and, because we see God even doing both, right? So and entire word of commissioners. How do, how do we feel about that? I like that, okay? So that is the one addition to the alternative wording. So I'll reread it with the change and then we'll move on. All right, so the alternative wording reads, when a board member's appointed term is set to expire, it will be their responsibility to communicate their wishes of being reappointed or not to the clerk of commission and the entire board of commissioners. This requirement will be for unsealed terms, term appointments, excuse me, as well as full term appointments. All right, so I think we've reached consensus there. I'll move on to section five and then we can move to a vote if, if, if so. Or do you want to take one each one at a time? Are you going to do it?
Let's vote together?
Yeah. Okay. All right, so in section five, we are proposing an addition as well or an amendment to the proposed section. And so I'm going to read what it says without the addition or with the addition and then we'll have the same open for the session. All right, so section five, tent this as a read, the board shall meet monthly, any board member who fails to attend three consecutive regular scheduled monthly meetings may be subject to removal from the board. Board members who will not be able to attend a meeting should notify the executive officers as soon as possible. All board of trustees members must inform the executive officers if they will not be able to attend a meeting at the earliest possible opportunity. So that's how it currently reads. This is the provision we would like to see. The board shall meet, so I'm going to speak on the provision at this time. The board shall meet monthly, any board member who fails to attend three consecutive regular scheduled monthly meetings may be subject to removal from the board. The suggested provision or addition is, in addition, if a board member is absent for six or more meetings in a calendar year, they will be removed from the board. So that's the addition. And then it continues to read as the original stated. So again, I'm going, the revision is, in addition, if a board member is absent for six or more meetings in a calendar year, they will be removed from the board. So I think you need a whole lot of time to think about that. That's not a straightforward, so any discussion? Okay, we don't have any discussion there, Chair Fabian? Would you like to come for a vote on the read with the provision?
Well, let me next comment, let me comment first. With that being said, I'm going to say six or more meetings. It's not that if you come to a meeting, inspector, well, I go to the next one, I start all over again in six consecutive. So you missed one, then you come to the next one, you missed, come to two more, you missed no one, each one of those still counts against you when you get to the, of six. That's it, it would be up to the board to have it removed.
I will say this then, I, I will say this. It says six or more, but if it's six, it's six. So why have I been saying or more? Because you're not really going to have an option to have any more. At six, you will be removed. So I think. Yeah, the or more is unnecessary to be there. And we can just say if you miss six within a calendar year, you will be removed from the board.
And the rationale is because you missed in a great number. That's a half a year.
We want to add in a participatory board, which I think we, we've had. So I don't foresee that being something that would affect this current board, but we just wanted to make sure that it's there in the event that it does happen.
And then also too, if you identify what month ago we were going to start this. Because the reason I'm saying we got three, it's gone, well, two is gone away and we have admitted to approve this. So are we going to? July?
So I would say it's effective immediately upon the change and to go to the effect immediately. Because I would accept rate as a July, I want to put this into effect, it should go to effect immediately. So as soon as we.
Incorrectly, if I'm wrong, are you speaking to this acting attractively or you're, you're saying the, this is. Are we going to start, once we approve this tonight? And we want to start this tonight or we want to go back to? I guess once we all vote and it's approved, I'm thinking from that point forward. From this point forward.
Are we all in agreement with this point forward? So I feel that it's okay. Ready to vote for section three and section five changes?
Okay. Just a clarification. So are we going to restrain or more?
Yes. Do you want me to reread it?
No, no, that's fine.
No, I'm like, I read all of that.
I'm believing, I have everyone else. Okay, you have heard the corrections and the edits to the terms of our bylaws. At this time, I need a motion to accept those corrections that have been made. I need a motion.
I'm motioning to accept the corrections to the bylaw, you know, adjustments to the bylaw.
It's been motioned by trustee Kowale. Is there a second?
My second.
It's been seconded by trustee Gates. Are there any questions? Here are none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposeds? Okay, any opposeds? Any extension? All right, so we move on along.
Trustee Andrews, did you want to reopen the secretary position? See if anyone nomination.
Yeah, and you still have, you have two that's out.
So you just want to hold off?
Well, that's opening up and then table again because we passed it, we table it before this. And I didn't see it on the agenda. But as mentioned last morning, we have a vacancy, which is the secretary position. No one reached out to me stating that they were interested in filling that position. So this evening, I was going to open it up to the floor to see if someone here this evening is interested. If there is none interested, I ask that we table to next board meeting, give people some more opportunity to think about it and reach out to me. But if there's none here, is there any one who sent it? I guess, Chairman, we will table that, that action. So next board meeting, which is, we, this is September. What's that, this is nine of the ninth? Yeah, so we're going to, we table till September ninth, our next one. All right, hearing what Mike Sherrin just said about the secretary position being table, I support and put it in a motion, which is legal. I have a motion, please. Oh, actually, you just made a motion. I did. Is there a second? Second by trustee Andrew, are there any questions? Here are none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposeds? Any extension? Motion passes. All right, if we have more than business, I have a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn?
I just probably moved by trustee. I said. Second by Mike Sherrin, are there any questions? If here is none, all in favor, say aye. All opposeds? Any extensions? I apologize, man. Fighting traffic, man.